Good evening. And, you know, we had so much fun last night that we are continuing on to tonight. The January 29th meeting is now moved on to January 30th. So, I guess we're just moving on, so no pledge of allegiance, we just keep on going, because we've already started with all that stuff. So with that, we're going to start the, I guess this is round three now, so I'll hand it off to Paul Spence.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the council. We're pleased to be back with you here this evening. We're going to spend just a few minutes going over a couple of the implementation steps on the Stockman's Deal that you did last night, and then we're at your disposal to run through the additional elements of the project. So with that, I'm going to hand this next portion over to Steve Stewart.
All right, so like Paul said, we'll take a look at the council's action from last night regarding the Stockman's offer. And, actually, I'm going to hand that over to our city attorney, Jason Alcala, to go over that.
And nobody wants this one, huh?
It's a hot potato this evening.
Third man up. All right, so what you had in your published agenda was a draft resolution with staff's recommendation. Yesterday evening before we continued to today, council had moved with staff's recommendation, but added a fourth item on their additional item. In your supplement, before you, you have a supplemental memorandum. Sorry, English is a preferred language at this point, at best. I'm a little groggy, as we all are. What you have before you is a revised resolution containing the additional information you added yesterday. You will see that there's three items. There's actually a fourth was your motion yesterday. However, that one of the items with regard to the solicitation and circulation of an RFP for affordable housing was already captured in another portion of your resolution. What we're requesting is that you review the revised resolution to make sure it accurately reflects your action from yesterday, and then take a vote to affirm that and confirm that that was indeed your action.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, you're good. So go back. I'm sorry, go back. So there's the item on the screen. Be it further resolved that the city council, the city of Livermore hereby authorizes the city manager or is designated to do the following. One, immediately initiate a general plan amendment for area A of the Civic Center campus to allow for an affordable housing land use. Two, concurrently initiate a zoning amendment for area A of the Civic Center campus for an affordable housing land use. And, three, take all necessary steps to process the applications for general plan amendment and a zoning amendment for the city council's consideration at the earliest possible date. There's an additional, there's an additional item in the recitals articulating why this was made, because this comment was presented to you at the lectern during public comment, questioning the council's intent, whether it actually intended to pursue affordable housing on this site. So staff has made a recommendation requesting and affirming action by you tonight.
Any questions for staff at this point? Do I have a motion?
I'll move. We accept the staff recommendation.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you.
All right, so just-
I've got a quick question. So does this mean we're done with this one now?
Yeah, I'm going to summarize some of the next steps that we've already taken, and then some that we would move forward with, implement your direction here. So, up on the screen, you'll see the two top points, issued RFP for landscape architect and also affordable housing developer. Those were already in your resolution, so you've already adopted that. And then the three bullets below, the preparing a downtown specific plan amendment, an RFP for a commercial developer to develop the retail around Stockman's Park, and then for the construction and operation of the cultural uses, those involving issuing RFPs. And, so we're looking for direction from you on proceeding with those steps. And, we would actually move forward with those unless you have a different direction there.
So our question to you is to affirm direction on those three items. If that is acceptable, you could move that in the form of a motion, and we would then begin to implement those three steps.
Okay, very good. So we've got the first two, and we just need the next three, or the, okay, any questions at this point? Is there a motion?
I'll also move.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Werner.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Spodowski.
I do have a question.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Carling.
Regarding the third one, the expectation was that these were going to be privately financed, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, but we ask or issue the RFP?
We would issue the RFP, because what you're granting is control of property that you currently own.
Okay.
And so what we would be evaluating essentially is a entity's ability to accomplish those things in exchange for a long-term lease or ownership of property that you currently own. So essentially-
Oh, I see, okay.
You would not want to turn property over to an entity that you believed couldn't accomplish those things. Although what you might do is give them a certain period of time, certain performance standards, but our very first question is, who would be interested in even trying to accomplish this? We can then bring that list back to you and then work with you to ultimately determine criteria necessary to enter in with a single entity, and then what those terms and conditions would be before we would give site control to those entities.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make a comment. I mean, given our previous experiences here, it's not a "might" that we want to put on performance standards and things.
All right. So, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Once again, it passes unanimously.
We did want to note one thing, Honorable Mayor and council, is that based on your direction and adoption of the Stockman's Deal last evening, one of the items in that direction to us was to initiate a general plan amendment and to initiate rezoning for this site here on Pacific Avenue, and staff has accomplished that. So we have started that process. We do expect to be back before both the planning commission, because it is a review by the planning commission when you change your general plan and zoning, and then finally back to you as the city council in spring.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So, and before we, now we're done with the rodeo part, right? Stockman's?
Not your first one.
All right, yeah. So at this point, I see Mr. Finster is in the audience, and I'd like to ask him if they've thought about when we might have the groundbreaking celebration for this deal. If you could come up and let us know.
If I could, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your vote from last night. Speaking as a fourth-generation Livermore native, and also as president for the Rodeo Association, I think this was a really great thing, not only for the Rodeo Association, but for the community. And what this, what this, what it did last night was get the ball rolling on downtown. And, it's a great thing, and I just want to thank you all for that. Now getting to your question on, we were looking at May, like, May 19th. The reason being, if we could do it around that time, is it would kind of tie in real good with 100 years of rodeo we will be celebrating this year. And hopefully, the whole community, it would be something everybody could get involved with, and it would be a good way to kickstart rodeo weekend and to celebrate kickstarting the new downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm free.
Okay.
Okay, so that's 50% of it. Okay, great.
Was that all you wanted to know?
That's excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, so to move on, your community development director, Paul Spence, is going to walk you through the next steps that we've broken up for your consideration, or however you'd like to consider those. And just as a heads up, we do have the presentation from last night, and also available if you'd like to refer to anything in that presentation. And then we also have the draft concepts available in this presentation at the end, if you need to, if you would like to refer to the draft concepts at any point in your discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Spence.
So you may recall, as organizing elements, we had divided this into four parts. We've now accomplished the first, and the next door's organizing element that we thought would be a good place to begin tonight's discussion is with the streets and parking, both permanent parking and the temporary parking that we would need to do with the initial phases. As you recall, we have some existing buildings that could be demolished and freed up some space for temporary parking. So, step number two then is suggested for you to discuss the east-west street, the parking structure in the southwest corner of the site, surface parking next to the new southwest garage, the high-street parking, and additional temporary parking. So that is our suggestion for your next step, and we'd be happy to put up on the screen if you would like either of the concepts, if that's helpful as you go through your next phase of discussion, and then your staff is available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so this really is the, we're considering, what really was number one in the community outreach? This was, parking was by far the most important, but open space and town character were two and three. So setting those large, big elements, open space is very important. So we've now set that element, so now we're back working on the first, most important, and that's, that's dealing with parking and also the circulation.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I can add to that, I believe number four was traffic and circulation.
Yeah.
So this also deals now with the top four. We're slowly working our way down the list.
Right, okay, very good.
So I think it would be helpful to put up one of the diagrams.
Yeah, just to reiterate, the components of the, most of the designs that we've looked at, the Stockman's Park was the same, the parking structures are basically the same. So circulation, those were not different. So it doesn't really matter if we're looking at a west-side hotel or an east-side hotel, those parking components are consistent through the plans.
Yes, your east-west street, your southwest parking garage, and your surface lot behind the First Street businesses, they're the same in both concepts.
Okay, comments, questions at this point?
It's kind of hard to get going. It's just, I mean, after last night and then going to work and starting up with the caffeine again, but, yeah, we've got to stop that. I mean, this is, we're not growing coffee beans in Livermore, but it sounds like we are. Yeah, I think, just in general, I don't see any, any argument against the L Street garage. I'm pleased with the amount of spaces that are fit into that garage. I think it'll be a nice area for people to focus on when they can't find surface parking, and that's another point. I think in general, people try and look for surface parking first, and then you're kind of resigned to your fate and you go to the parking garage. So I think that the amount of surface parking that we're providing is also a good advantage as well. In terms of circulation, the east-west running street through the site, I think, is critical for the site. You know, you can throw out public safety and access with that, but, you know, I think due to the size of this block, and it was mentioned before, we're turning this into a typical-sized block for downtown, not keeping it as a mega-block, so to speak. I also think, though, that the ease of police being able to drive through and have eyes on the site with this street in both directions is critical. So the west side, I'm fine with. I have no additional comments unless we want to argue the merits of one thing or another. I think it looks great. It's the best that I've seen out of, out of any, any concept so far. On the east side, one of the comments that we heard several times, drop-off for the bankhead. And I think that this, if you could highlight the, I didn't bring my pointer this time. The last time we were talking about downtown, I had my pointer, but that, that feature, I believe, will be very nice, the drop-off at the southern portion. Oh, no.
Don't, don't give me, yeah.
Now, now we're all going to fight over it, and it's going to be a big-
No, you can have it.
How do I, okay, wait, no. So, yeah, the, the drop-off here is absolutely great. We don't really have, you know, an adequate drop-off area in downtown right now where you can say, hey, pick me up at the drop-off, or, you know, something that's centralized. That, that's, that I believe is a good feature. And then we also have the parking here, in particular, the 10 ADA spaces, and that's something that we've been struggling with with downtown, is finding ample ADA spaces. One discussion that I'd like to have, and maybe, you know, possibly not, not this evening, but seeing how many more ADA spaces we might be able to fit in there. I know we would be losing our quote-unquote "regular parking," but we are above our replace-the-parking and all of the new needs level, so I think that that, that would be a discussion that we might want to have at some point. But overall, don't have any major issues with the circulation and/or the parking. So I have the talking laser pointer.
And you can-
It worked for the Senate, right? Or they had a stick?
So, that brings up a question. So, that's okay, I don't need it. So, question with respect to the ADA parking. Is it possible to have flexible ADA parking? For example, a lot of people go to the bankhead, and most of those are evening performances. So would it be possible to say, after 5:00, that those become ADA spots? Because I noticed that during, during the day, most of the ADA spots next to the bankhead are empty. And those are spots that we could use for people going into the downtown, going to the restaurants and the like, but those are, those are empty, they're not being used. But if, when there are performances at the bankhead, say after 5:00, if somebody wanted to come into the downtown, go out to dinner and then go to the bankhead, say after 5:00, all those spaces become ADA? Now, is it, I don't even, is that possible, or is it once an ADA, always an ADA?
Well, as you know, the striping for an ADA, because you have to have the delivery area, is different than a standard. I don't know that there is any, so you would have to, if you wanted to use them for ADA in any portion of the day, you'd have to physically stripe them as if they were ADA.
Right.
I don't know of any restriction that says that I can't time-limit the ADA, but I'd have to do a little bit of research on that.
Yeah, but I think it'd be sort of an elegant solution, because you could create more. You'd still have regular parking during the day, but then, when you have the greatest demand for the ADA parking, you could create that, and you didn't, you wouldn't lose those spots during the day.
Right.
I do know that one. That is, you cannot put a time limit on, and if they're ADA parking, they are ADA parking, they are disabled parking, so.
Okay, so you can't-
You can park indefinitely at a meter, in a green zone, in a disabled parking spot. I've not aware of any community that's created a flex-disabled parking. If there are any, I could probably look for them, but-
Yeah, I just wasn't aware if there was a restriction that said we couldn't.
I agree with you, I don't know- As far as I know, there's nothing written into the law, but I, I suggest it might run afoul of me if I see somebody without a placard down there during the day, and I'm pissed off because there's nowhere else to park. And I can't unload my wheelchair anywhere else. Either somebody's car is going to get a big scratch in it, or I'm going to, I'm just going to go and park behind them and hope they come out.
Well, the fact of the matter is, is you can, you can pretty much park anywhere, but the ADA spots are, a regular person that is not in need of an ADA spot wouldn't be able to park in an ADA spot, but they would be able to park in a non-designated spot. So I'm just thinking, is there, we wouldn't be creating any less during the day, but we might have an opportunity to create more when there's greater demand. We still have the amount that was required, but we'd have an opportunity to be able to create more when we needed it, when there was a greater demand. Just, I'm looking to. Wish Mayor?
So we're on that topic. For the bankhead facility, how many spaces would be the typical amount that would be provided?
So, per se, the bankhead doesn't have its own parking, so it's really, it's determined by the number of parking spaces that you're putting in the garage or in the lot. That's what dictates how many have to be ADA.
So here's, here's the question, and I don't know, I'm tired, maybe you guys are too. Here's, the question is, we've got 10 designated there, which I think is more than triple what's currently there, okay? And we've heard that we want even more, but when is enough? What, how do you determine what the right number is? And what is that number?
So the, the bankhead's parking technically is provided at the existing parking garage, and that has the appropriate number of accessible spaces. So we, we don't have a technical issue. From a practical standpoint, we could do some striping, see how it is utilized and-
What I'm asking for is not that. I'm asking, what's the number?
So, we can get you the legal number based on the parking demand of the facility, although, I shouldn't say, so the law says one for every 25 spaces when you're doing a parking lot. What we can do is we can say, for the bankhead theater, here's the number of spaces that should be built, the total number of parking spaces, and therefore, using the legal ratios for that, this is what the legal mandate would be. But there's a whole nother issue of, the people attending a theater may tend to be more-
Careful.
Yeah, more in need of-
So here's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
We have this conversation we're having now.
Mm-hmm.
We've got a proposal for a 352-space garage next to it, primarily to, for the bankhead. How do we get a handle on what's reasonable and what's enough? I mean, right, is, it's sort of like the green space conversation we had here, no matter what we do, they, people want more. So what is, how do we know when we've approached a reasonable amount? And then, I'm all for it, and so therefore, I would say, well, let's up the amount beyond the reasonable amount. But I'm asking, what's the base target that we're thinking about here?
So one way to think of a base target would be that, as Sheri already stated, the law says one per 25 within a parking structure. If you apply that same to a 500-seat theater like the bankhead, you would be taking 500 divided by 25, I think that's 20.
But the problem with it- The only thing with that, David, is they don't all come in, oftentimes, they come to a, to do a car, so-
Right, exactly.
The parking demand wouldn't be as high as the total number of seats in the theater.
Right, so, but even so-
Yeah.
You just told me the number which I was looking for. It's around 20, okay? And we have a number in the garage.
Well, and to be clear, it's, it's a maximum of 20. I think Sheri's pointing out it might be less than that.
Let me just, let me just get, I can do the math. So the point is, we got a number around 20, which is kind of a maximum number, right? If everybody arrived on the peak and whatever, and we know it's going to be less. But let me just say, 20 is a maximum number for the facility. We're proposing 10 right next to it. And I want to second Councilmember Spodowski's suggestion, that if all you would need to do was put another 10 across the street, and you've more than accommodated it, and we've had the conversation before, but on the other side of the bankhead, you could put another eight. So what I'm saying is, we can solve pretty clearly the ADA needs for this facility without a parking garage. That's all I'm saying. Just, I just wanted to put it in perspective. Thank you.
Well, could I also build on that just quickly? So Vice Mayor Warner mentioned the proposal for a 352-space parking garage next to the bankhead theater. What kind of footprint would that be on the site? How many stories would that be at 352 spaces? Do we have a rough estimate? I mean, we, we know the, the size of the lot. I know I'm kind of asking you to-
63 there now.
Are we a bit off-topic, aren't we supposed to be just-
Well, I, I wanted to bring up traffic and circulation.
I know that, but I thought we were supposed to be working on this particular-
Sure.
-element, and it doesn't, it does not include the side of, or the west side of the bankhead.
Right. I'm leading to another circulation question.
Okay.
So, it just, out of curiosity, if staff had figured out how many stories that would be for 352?
I would suspect you'd be around, between four and five stories.
Levels.
Levels.
So four and five levels, if one subsurface whatever, okay. The-
That's assuming there are no other uses. If you place other uses within that, commercial, other, then it's a little more than that, obviously. Every, you're creating additional spaces where you wouldn't be putting parking.
Okay. And then, leading that discussion into traffic and circulation, one of the, the topics, and I brought it up during the, the first proposal of an east-side hotel, was the traffic generated by the hotel on the corner and the, the circulation. So, a hotel versus residential versus a 352-space parking garage, what would have the greatest impact to that intersection?
Well, the garage, that larger garage would definitely have the highest traffic impacts at that location.
Do you know by what order of magnitude? Because that, that, I believe at, at one point, we heard a lot of public testimony and, and comments during comment periods about the traffic generated by the hotel on that corner. So if we have something that is roughly, what, four, five times a higher of a traffic generator? And it's also, I know, it's different because there'd be peak periods with a garage versus a hotel.
Right. So what I can relate to you is, when we did west-side A, there was a garage at that location, I think it was about 200 spaces, and the impact at the intersection associated with that 200 space, roughly 200-space garage, was up to a level of service, a 71-second delay from the current 46-second delay. So it was significantly higher than what is now proposed as just a hotel. It would go even higher than that if you put 400 spaces of parking there, or 350 spaces of parking there.
So the diagram where we saw the 14-second additional delay versus the 17, we'd be looking at a 30-plus second delay. What would that do in terms of backing up traffic on North Livermore or Railroad? Because you'd have to enter either through Railroad or North Livermore, there's no other entryway.
We haven't done a detailed queuing analysis, you know that, but we already know, we know that there would be problems on Livermore Avenue. Don't, we haven't gone to try to research, we haven't done a full analysis of if there's any kind of way to actually help reduce that. I don't think we could eliminate the queuing issues that are likely to result from that.
Okay. So that, that's just, you know, I wanted to make sure that we discussed that, and backing up my, my view that this is probably the best plan in terms of traffic circulation and impacts for the downtown. So, thank you.
Bringing up the question, and talking about theaters and parking and the like, we used to go to a lot of theater in San Francisco before, before the bankhead opened. And what do theaters like the Curran, the Golden Gate, the Geary, the Orpheum, what do those do for approximate ADA accessible parking? I, I just flash-nighted, because I remember, you know, walking to the theater and thinking, I don't recall having seen that, but I'm just curious. You know, we're bending over backwards, we're trying to accommodate everybody, and I just happened to think, you know, we saw Hamilton, and there was no ADA parking anywhere near it.
I was going to say, we haven't done a specific study, and I have anecdotal evidence, because I go to the theaters. Generally speaking, they deal with it as drop-offs, and much of the parking, as you know, is in the general vicinity, it could be two to four blocks away, so most of the ADA issue is dealt with through drop-off.
Yeah, none of those theaters have parking lots next to them like-
Right.
-the bankhead it does.
Right, yeah.
And to her point, I mean, it's based on the parking lot, not the amenity to which you're-
Yeah, the Curran's about four blocks away.
Well, yeah, I mean, the Orpheum's, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you've got to take part.
Well, right, or the bus, or a walk or something, yeah.
Okay. All right. So we've gone through-
Could I, but could I ask one more question?
Sure.
I would, Vice Mayor Warner referred to a, a study for the bankhead. It was a survey regarding parking. If we can get that distributed to the council, I'd be interested in taking a look at it. I don't know if, I believe, and I don't want to miscategorize what you said, but that the majority of people in the survey were content, or beyond content, they were happy with the current parking situation at the bankhead. And also, speaking of rankings, and this happens to be a number four as well, I believe I heard, and this is why I want the report, so we can all see it, if it's available to us, that the patrons of the bankhead ranked ease of parking as the number four reason why they liked the bankhead. So I just want to make sure that we put this into, into some kind of perspective and give some reasoning why we would or would not consider a large parking structure next to the bankhead theater.
We can get that for you.
We can get that for you.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Now, you know what? I just, I, I'm kind of losing my train of thought because we're kind of going afar from 10 disabled spaces, which sound like a, a pretty good number. And centralized right down there where you can get, go either way up towards, towards Maple or down towards L. And that's really the part I wanted to think was, was, I don't think we're at the point to talk about a parking structure at this point or anything like that on the east side. I think that will come with time. But I, I just want to make sure that we can centralize something that, that, where we can concentrate some disabled ADA accessible parking in a location that's convenient for any variety of spaces instead of an outlying type of a, even on the, even in a garage on, on First and L, it's a distance if you're going down to the, the movie theater. So I just, I want to go get back to what our original thought was. This is 10 spots in that spot, and what's going to happen later will happen later, I think. And I think we're all pretty clear on what we all want.
Okay. So looking at the, at the diagram, we've had quite a bit of discussion about, there was general agreement, I think, on the parking structure at the, the southwest of this particular diagram, or actually, that's the northeast of the, of the intersection. So any, any further?
Okay, go, go ahead. Go ahead, Bob. It's okay.
That's all right.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to say some of the things that I note in this diagram and what I like about it. If I could, I'll just go through it. First of all, and, and as Mr. Madden pointed out, and he's really focused on the trash. So we've got trash going here. We've got trash here. And this street through here, in addition to the drop-off that we just talked about, and all the way here, and the, and the street in here, right? That, that's all for service and trash and access to those private lights, lots. So that's a good feature of this design, so that this garage is not jammed up against the gas station, right? It's, there's space in there for movement. The other thing that I'll note here is that this thing has been configured to allow for the use of the space north of the Ale House. It also allows Casa Crute to have its patio over there. And the trash bin that's here, that kind of is smelly at times, will be over here and properly enclosed. And there is a, a good way to, for the trash that has to move to get there. So this, this is from the more mundane aspects of things. It, it works. I mean, we thought about it. And that's one of the things that really hasn't, is oftentimes not thought about. The other question I've got is, I believe we had talked about making that, at least the southwest garage, a half level below. Is that in the, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. So right now, what we've shown is a four-level garage all above grade. Certainly, when we start the real design of this, we'll, we can look at the alternatives where we consider some, some portion of the parking to be.
Well, I, I just want to make, the question isn't, is if instead of housing there, there's a hotel there, and depending on the configuration, that was specifically wanted to lower that for two reasons. One is the view from the hotel. And the other is, we don't want this thing looming over the back of First Street. So I'm just, so that's, just want to make sure of that. The, one of the things also I like about this design, it's a properly-designed two-way street, and it has the diagonal parking for the traffic calming. And what I don't know for sure is, and I'd ask, is do we have ADA spaces along there designated?
We didn't specifically identify ADA spaces, but there would be a certain.
No, that's, I just want to make sure. So we might make a note in the plans that of these spaces properly allocated, there would be some.
Okay.
Right? And that goes with Councilmember Coomer's point. We gotta, as we build new stuff, we gotta make it, that, from the get-go.
And we would expect to have some in the surface lot as well there.
Right. Okay. Just, just want to make sure. But call it out. Because it, we, we did hear, but let's call it out in the rest of the place, just so it makes, we're focused on it. The, let's see. Oh, the one final thing, and we're talking about the circulation, and I don't know if it's, you know, if I'm allowed to talk about it now. Maybe it's a later phase. But in this diagram, that's another part of the circulation. And that piece there, the south part of that K Street extension is for emergency vehicles and service vehicles. And that's a critical part of this design. Again, it's all of that. So I, and so it's not only are we not having a super block here, we're very cognizant of how the, the critical vehicles are going to move around here. So those, I think at this point, are some of the things I would highlight about why this design is, in, in my mind, a very good one.
Councilmember Coomer?
I had a wish list of, since we've talked about the, the waste, location, the waste bins and everything, and I'm in 100% accord with that. But I want to talk pre-waste. Let's talk about the deliveries. Where are we going to put people who are delivering things downtown? I hear complaints from everybody, UPS, the merchants, to people trying to park. Where does a UPS truck, a FedEx truck, a whatever, a beer truck? And that is a, a concern to me because frequently, when I see them, mostly they're at Second and, Second and J. And in the afternoon, three of those accesses, as ramps to the street, will be blocked by one or more delivery vehicles. So if we have a yellow zone, if we can create something, or maybe several downtown, to be able to give drivers a, an option for delivering in a way that doesn't go impede traffic, impede pedestrian traffic, that would be great to incorporate it somehow while we're still in the drawing stage here. Let's see if we can draw that into it and make that happen.
We would, we have thought a bit about that. We would anticipate for the project here that deliveries would occur through this area, and you'd have a, a delivery drop-off area on the edge of the surface parking lot here. And so this is a centralized location that has easy access to the First Street businesses. On the other side, your drive-through here would have a drop-off and delivery area. So that would also accommodate delivery vehicles.
If, if I could say, there's a couple more spots, right? It's right there is one, and then you, right through here.
Yes, that's right.
But I, I really like that suggestion of making the delivery.
We just, we just want to make sure that it's an emphasis, so people know that we're, we're thinking about it.
Oh, yeah.
It's never done. And I hear so much, we talk to the UPS guys all the time, an old employer of mine, so he is, and they got nowhere to go, and they're complaining, and everybody complains.
Yeah, I resonated when you, you brought it up in one of the other meetings. And it's, yeah, let's just, it, it's this, it's this mundane stuff that really makes a difference as to how well a design works.
Further questions, comments on the, on the parking? A question I've got on the, the I Street parking. Now, originally, that's going to be a surface lot. And if needed, we could put a structured parking facility out there. Is that going to have, is there going to be access to that parking lot from the, the current parking structure? Because the idea being is if somebody goes in there, do they have to then exit that parking lot, or they can go from there into the parking structure?
The intent was to incorporate access into and through the garage, so as part of that.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I thought we had indicated, or, or maybe that's what we're also approving, is that we're going to punch the hole in the new, in the existing garage, restructure.
Right.
Everything, right, through there?
That's, that's what, yeah, that's what I was indicating.
Just clarifying that.
Right.
And so for the, for the first phase, and actually for the first three phases, we would anticipate only having surface parking there. In the, in the out phase, we could think about whether to expand that surface parking or to, to do structured parking in that location.
All right. So any other input or direction on, on this? Is everybody satisfied with what we've got here? All right. In that case, should I entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of the southwest parking structure, the, I guess we would call it the, where's the slide? I don't, I don't have my cheat sheet. The street configuration. Here we go. Hang on. The east-west parking structure and the southwest corner of the west side, surface parking next to the southwest garage and I Street parking.
And if we can add to that temporary, miscellaneous temporary parking?
Right. And the miscellaneous temporary parking associated with all phases of the plan as they are developed.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Spodowski?
I'll second that, yeah.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously.
Do we have to make something about the specific plan amendment and the SEQA?
Right. So if we could proceed to the next slide, we would suggest, based on your motion and your decision, that you further direct us to proceed with implementation steps, which would include demolition of buildings on the downtown sites to facilitate temporary parking, to move forward on construction of the southwest parking garage, including design and design of the east-west street, and design of the surface parking at I Street, to prepare a specific plan amendment to recognize these, these uses in these locations, and then also to do the necessary site plan design review and SEQA analysis for these improvements.
So I'll move approval of those stated steps by staff.
Second.
Okay. Moving and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. We're rolling right along here. Okay, and that was, that was for all three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, hotel location. All right, let me ask a question here. Do we have, okay, are you guys up for, for beating on this one tonight?
Oh, just, just a second, if I may. Did we include, since we've done the Stockman's Park, what, what happened to the K Street?
So the K Street extension is not included in the Stockman's Park. There.
Right.
This, I don't.
I would just.
Oh, no, it's outside the science.
Yeah, this.
It's intended to be phased.
Right. So this is, this improvement is intended to be phased with these uses, but it's not included as part of your Stockman's Park easement. It is a separate, separate.
So, so here's, here's my question. That's, that is kind of like a street. That's what we just dealt with.
Right.
And I can believe that, you know, depending on what goes on the northwest corner, we might fiddle around a little bit with that. But at, at some point, I would, I don't know what to discuss and move or whatever, and make it clear that in, as we're developing the designs for the northwest corner, that the, that there's some kind of stub coming down there to surface the Science Center, and that that then continues in a, for emergency vehicle and service vehicle access. So I, I think that all, as far as I'm concerned, all plans need to have that. So I don't know what point we want to do. Does anybody else want to comment on it? But I'm ready to move that we do that.
Is that a requirement for safety and fire and so on?
We haven't looked at that level of detail to see whether it would specifically be required, but it is very desirable.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be, rather than a, a street extension so much, it's just an access. Just something where we can get around. And it could be generally a pedestrian walk or however we configure it. But other than that, just an access for emergency vehicles. I think that makes perfect sense.
Yeah. So if, I don't know if I could just say for a, emergency and service vehicles as appropriate. So if, so I would just like to move that all plans that we develop have some way for emergency and service vehicle access at, basically around, just to the west, west of the Stockman's Park.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, that's, that was a motion. Okay.
All, all second. And also, further discussion, this isn't to say that it's going to look like a, a paved street with, you know, curb on either side. It's integrated into the park, into the hardscape, styled and themed and to look like the rest of it. We're, we're asking for the ability to be able to pull vehicles onto it and integrate it into the site. So it's not, you wouldn't notice it if, you know, it's, it's, we're talking more of the width than the, you know, you're not, you know, designing it to highway standards.
Right. The, the intent is to have it be a decorative paving material that would look like the rest of the park.
Right.
But it would be sized and constructed to handle the weight of those vehicles.
Gotcha.
Right. And, and the other thing is that you don't want to have it look like Lombard Street, but it doesn't have to be a perfectly straight line.
So all those, so as the maker of the motion, Vice Mayor, do you accept those modifications by Councilmember Spodowski?
Just glorification.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. And, and the modifications I made.
Thank you.
How does it read now?
Hey, you are trying. Okay, here, let me, let me, let me try. I'll start all over. Can I do that? So I'll, I'll move that the plans that we develop on that northwest corner incorporate an extension of K Street that will accommodate as appropriate service vehicles and emergency vehicles. And that it doesn't have to be in a straight line, and that the materials used will be compatible with the other materials in the park and what we have on the west side.
I'll second, my second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Spodowski. Discussion of the motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously as well. All right. So where is the council tonight as far as?
Besides being tired?
I mean, it's early.
Pardon me?
It's early. It's only 10:00 in the state.
That's true.
So, so may I try something with respect to this? So I, I'm, I'm thinking about all the comments we heard last night. And there were some, two, two sets that I'll say. One was, of course, the hotel location, east or west. But there was also a considerable discussion of if the hotel went on the west side, what, where should its long axis be located? Along Railroad or along L? And then, that then begs the question of the housing element that would accompany it. Where do they go? And what shape and size do they have? And, and there was a, a great number of people offering comments as to how to do that. So I'd like to suggest, I don't know how to phrase it, but that we have staff reach out to those people, then basically the same set, or it's actually a subset of what we had in the steering committee, that have formed opinions on what that should look like over there. Right? Because we, we've heard that, well, maybe that's not the best way because we want to do some more green or whatever. So I, I'm, I think that this decision is a very important decision, and that we shouldn't just do it tonight because we're tired and there's some political reason to do it. I personally would like to know what the hotelier finds acceptable, and what implications does that have for the housing? Because it, we do know that the, the proximity and the height, style and things like that. So it's not, it's not a simple thing. I think we should get more input from the people that are interested in this. And that somehow we form, the hotelier works with staff, and staff solicits input from those interested parties within a timeframe, a short timeframe, and that we actually are able to consider different configurations of those three buildings over there on the west side that have been thought through. And the reason that I'm thinking we take a little bit of time here is, depending on what you do, that determines the amount of housing that has to go over at the Bankhead, if in fact the hotel goes on the west side. And the other thing that was being alluded to here is the parking garage. Now, some people have advocated very strongly for putting another parking garage there. That's not simple. And we heard some discussion last night that that's, may not be viable. And we've also heard some discussion tonight that it has potential issues. And I think there's time to study that. And where I'm going. And where I'm going with this is, is we need to be clear. We picked the arrangement of the three buildings on the west side for, you know, a hotel and two residential. That determines the size of the residential that has to go next to the bankhead. And then we are really up against a very clear question at some point here, because I do believe the garage may turn out to be problematic. There's a chance that it's problematic and not doable. And therefore, we're going to be faced with a very clear decision. Does the community want housing next to the bankhead? Or does the community want a hotel next to the bankhead? So I think we're missing some critical information. I think we should take another little bit of time to get it, and then make the decision with respect to the hotel location in a very short period of time, but with additional critical information. So that's where I'm coming from.
What are you thinking about in the timeframe there? Because I don't find what you're saying objectionable at all. I think it's something that there's a lot at stake in getting this right here, and there's several configurations that are still in the wind out there. And I frankly don't like the idea of the residential watching me snooze on the lawn. So, you know, people in their rooms looking out the window and complaining because I'm sitting there in a corner listening to birds. It's, it may not be the most private place.
So I think I'll, just in a moment, I'll turn it over to staff. And to answer that question, but I, because, you know, if it were up to me, it'd be like, let's do it tomorrow. But I don't think staff would like that. So I think they're going to have to answer it. But I would say that, in my mind, as quickly as is reasonable to get the sufficient information, I mean, it's just full speed ahead on that. It's a critical decision. In some ways, I like making decisions quickly. This is the last biggest one. It's the most important, and it's the one we're going to have to live with. And I think we should, it should be carefully considered, and that we should, given now, the decisions we just made, we can have real focus by everybody that within that northwest...
I stole it.
Well, you can point for me. So, and within that northwest quadrant, now what do you want to do? Because all the designs that people have been floating around in the past have been unconstrained. A lot of times unconstrained by reality. Now, we're clear. So let's get the input. It's a critical decision, and let's listen once again. Because if you look at our plans, it incorporates 95% of everything we've heard. And now we're down to the, which, what's the axis of the hotel? But the person who has, should make that decision, as was pointed out by Mr. Madden last night, is the hotelier. So, under the express, you know, direction, I'll just say, of the hotelier, working with staff and placeworks and getting the last round of input, we get some designs, and then we fully understand the implications of those designs when we make our decision. So that's, that's where I'm thinking. So at this point, is the day after tomorrow instead of tomorrow? Or what do you think?
The difficult we do routine, the impossible, just takes a little bit longer, right?
There we go.
Do we have an opposing?
So, so let me actually, I think I've got an idea of when we can bring this back, but part of that depends on what the assignment is. So let me see if I can get some clarification on what the assignment is. So you have defined certain areas of the site with your actions tonight. So my first step is to assume that those are givens in any of the design analysis alternatives that we do. We don't move or redesign any of those items that you've given direction on. For example...
I hope that what we moved and voted on is like done.
There we go. Okay, that's the first piece there. So for example, the southwest garage is where it is located, at the size it's located.
And you, and you might drop it a half level if you need to.
Absolutely. Alright, so the, the assignment is for staff and consultants in cooperation with the hotelier that the council has an ENRA with, to do some analysis of various alternatives. As a part of that process, we're also reaching out to other folks who are interested in that process. But the objective is to look at a variety of different ways to lay the objects out that are remaining.
Let me, we're not, not a variety. I mean, just a couple.
Okay.
Right, that makes sense. I mean, you've got two choices. You've got the long axis of the hotel either on L Street or Railroad.
Fair enough.
That's, that's your choice. And we're not going to run it diagonally through the thing, right?
Are we also doing an alternative that includes east side alternatives? Or are these the west side alternatives only that we're...
Well, what I'm saying is, we're, first question is, does it make sense to put the hotel on that parcel with all now the constraints that we've done? And what are the implications for the housing that then would have to go next to the bankhead? I mean, what, is it feasible? Does it make sense? Does the hotelier think it's okay across those dimensions? Because we did hear from the hotelier earlier that the long axis along L Street, as illustrated, can work. But we've heard from the public, they'd like to rotate it. So, okay, it's, we got this or we got a rotation. Right, we don't have to, we're not infinite combinations. But the question has been pointed out, lots of people mentioned it last night, they'd like to rotate the hotel. But we haven't heard from the hotelier or anybody, does that design make any sense?
Why can't we ask him?
Pardon?
Why can't we ask him right now?
We can. And so, we can go there. But before we do that, can, we, we had asked staff the question of how fast they can do this, and they haven't answered yet. Because we've been interrupting. So let's answer the question. And actually, I'm the one who's been doing the interruption.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, we've got a minute. Could I point out one small thing? Because Councilmember Warner, I think you've said this twice, to think about how much more housing would go near the bankhead on the east side. I just want to clarify that the amount of housing we've shown there, about 70 units, our calculations is that's the most you're going to get there. So you, you don't actually have an option to move more towards the east side.
Well, then it could be the other way. I mean, phrase it, less housing. I mean, what's the impact on the housing? Can you actually get more housing over there if you do? I don't know. And then what's, how much more green space do you get? But there's only two choices here, this way or the rotated way. And it hasn't been analyzed yet in the rotated way.
Fair enough. So constraining the, the analysis to the, to the western portion of the larger block there, it would evaluate a hotel in two different configurations and then the resulting housing in the remaining configurations. Single building, multiple buildings, trying to basically, I'm assuming that the given is we're trying to basically fit 125-room hotel. Another given is we're trying to ultimately get to 130 housing units made up of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, essentially, between the two sites that you've identified for the housing there. Are those, is that accurate direction?
Yes, and the next piece of that, because it was also suggested, and we haven't analyzed it, is if you go back to the east hotel design, that I didn't hear anybody who liked that. Okay, so...
I think there are a lot of people like that.
I just, I didn't hear them. I can't remember.
Oh, the housing, you mean?
The housing configuration of the hotel.
The housing.
Okay.
Okay, right, I don't remember anybody who said they liked that big block. I don't. Maybe I missed it.
So from that perspective, one of the things you'd like us to look at is if there's an east side hotel, are there other residential alternatives such as what was shown, essentially the amassing for the west side? Essentially, if those three buildings on the...
Right, now.
Far western side of the site were residential.
Now, let's think about this. Because on this side, the heights of these things were determined by the hotel.
Correct.
If it's all housing, you've got a little bit different thinking here. So the other thing that I would like to see is if this is housing, but you want this open design, what is it? And we've also heard that the part of thing for the green space and, you know, there's, there's some importance. There's some, you know, trying to get a whole line all the way to L Street. I mean, that's coming from somewhere. But the, the other point is that you could put the housing parallel to railroad and parallel to the new street. And then you've got a different configuration there. So there are basically two configurations for the housing if you put the hotel on the east side, and that's something like this, or two parallel buildings where you open it up in here. And I think, I heard a lot of comment about the value of rotating the axes here in the green space. So I'm thinking, I'd like to see that for real before I make the decision. That's where I'm coming from.
Senator Spodowski?
Just a comment as well. I think we also need to be very clear as to the housing unit type that we're asking for, that we are not considering microunits. Throughout the entire process, we didn't really hear many, you know, comments and hues and cries for microunits. If you do look up online what a microunit is, it's typically a, what, 200 to 300 square foot unit with a kitchenette, if you're lucky, never a full kitchen, and you might be able to have a twin-size bed. Well, I think that's the, the minimum. Definitely not a queen or a king. It's just kind of a one-room unit. And that's not what we're talking about when we're talking about workforce housing. The key on, the descriptor on the, on the sites here is it's multi-family residential. So we want families to be able to live on, on this site. And I think that's important when you're talking about the, the footprint of the buildings. I would be curious to see, and I, actually, I'll just talk this through. If you were to rotate the hotel here, and some people are advocating taking, so this is the footprint of the 70 units here on this site. It's, it's not just this yellow here. There's some units here, I believe, and also on the corner as well. So if you were to take that, this entire footprint, plus this and this, and try to essentially cram it onto this site, you're looking at at least a four-story building there. And I just, I don't think that that would work. One of my goals, and I believe this relates to maintaining the character of, of the downtown, was to limit the massive residential look and feel, the, the big block of, of housing. So to put the 130 multi-family unit residential here, and then the hotel here, it just, I, I don't, I don't see that actually fitting. I could see rotating the hotel and moving the buildings down here, and you would still need some of that residential accounted for next to the bankhead. That, that may work. Or just moving this building over here and flipping the hotel, that may work. One of the other concerns that I have with rotating the hotel along railroad, here's the parking garage. Right now, one of the advantages, I believe, of the west side hotel is you have some relatively easy access to the, the parking garage. If you don't park underneath the hotel, if you're going there for a wedding or for an event, it's right across the street. Now you're going to have residential in between the parking garage. I, I just don't understand how that, how that makes a lot of sense. Also, there have been comments about the views. I think, you know, maybe some example photographs of the views might be helpful. I'm, I'm volunteering to do that possibly this weekend. I have the heights of the buildings from staff. I also have my drone's pilot license. And nine months ago, I applied with the FAA for a waiver to fly in controlled airspace through Livermore. So I can legally and commercially fly in Livermore and get the views that people are talking about along railroad, also along L, and then the views from the hotel, looking down, should it go in this location, looking down Stockman's Park. So I'll volunteer to do that this weekend if I can find my extra battery, because it's going to take. I couldn't find it before the meeting, but I just don't know. I, I'm willing to look at it. I just don't understand how that would all fit on that one site. So I think it needs to be, you know, we're not talking, analysis to the point where you can accurately draw the, the scale of the buildings on the site, not necessarily going into the, the finer detail. Plus, access along railroad for the hotel, I, I recall hearing that that's extremely problematic. And I don't know if Sherry can comment on the, on the axis along railroad when you have the, this length of a driveway. You know, to me, railroad is, is the street where you want all of the traffic that doesn't want to have to deal with First Street and Second Street and everything else below. If you're cruising downtown, you're, you're going down First Street. I love going down First Street, you know, driving by the donut wheel, seeing who's there. But if you just want to get the heck through town, everybody hits railroad. So I'm, I'm reluctant to change configuration or to create many conflicts. I mean, we have one here for the residential, you have one here as well, and a potential service here. But for the hotel, I, I heard that that wasn't necessarily an easy-to-accomplish feat.
Could I just interject something real quick? We're not necessarily trying to work that now, and I think the reason, that's the reason I was suggesting that we think about this a little bit, but that the, the kind of analysis you just went through is what we're asking for associated with the configuration of the boxes. Right, that we understand the implications of the design about how it's going to work.
Councilmember Carling?
So I have a different point of view. I think we ought to decide. I mean, if we need to, I mean, that's another thing we heard last night. I thought pretty clearly from a majority of the people is just make a decision. And I guess I am against asking the staff to go up and do a bunch more analysis. I think we should ask Mr. Patel tonight what he thinks about turning it 90 degrees and go from there.
Well, let's ask Mr. Patel to come up, and there's a couple more questions beyond that.
Well, my, my question is, where is it going to be the most successful?
Well, right.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I mean, come on up.
My concern.
I agree with you, and that's why I don't know why we need a lot more analysis.
Mr. Patel, you're on.
Good evening. This is why I sit in the back with my head down, so...
Hoping nobody recognizes you.
So what was the question again?
So, the, the one question was, how do you feel about rotating the axes? But there are the other questions that are there are, if you had your choice and unconstrained by the local politics, and you were just coming in and didn't know anything about it, where would you put the hotel and why? And ultimately, I think the other question is, given the state of our negotiations, discussions with you, are you okay with what I'm going to presume is a, a couple of weeks of analysis? That we might have further analysis, does that impact your plans or ability to raise the funds or do anything? So how do you feel about a time delay of a couple of weeks? And how do you feel about rotating the axes? And which, at the moment, unconstrained by politics, where would you put the hotel? I mean, it, Councilmember Carling, is that a fair set of questions?
Yeah, I'd start with the last, I'd go in reverse order that you just said. I, I...
Go, go for, go for the order. Those are the questions.
Your preferred, your preferred location and then the rotation.
Yeah.
On the west.
Preferred location, I think your caveat, Councilmember Warner, was important, which is, what would be my decision if I was totally unconstrained by politics? I just want to make that clear before I say what I say. Wasn't meant to be funny. I was being truthful. I think...
You weren't here last night.
That's true.
Wisely so.
I, I think I stick to what I said very early on in the process, I think from day one, which is the east side makes the best sense for the hotel. And I think, you know, the answer is simple. It's all about presence. The hotel needs a presence. And if it's going to be the only hotel downtown, which I assume is the case, it needs to be in the primary location, which is that east side parcel. And I think, you know, from that accessway, gateway perspective, the views, again, looking over Stockman's Park now would be excellent from, from south Livermore across the street. So to answer your question, completely unconstrained by politics, my preference would be for the council to choose the east side today. That would be my preference. But, you know, assuming politics are, are important, which they are, and I think everything should be considered, of course, a west side hotel, sitting where it is right now, I think would work, as I had discussed before. Rotating the hotel towards or along railroad, the most important consideration from my perspective is where the lobby and where the main common space for the hotel is going to be. And right now, the lobby and the main common space is sitting right on the corner of L and Railroad. Rotating the hotel to make it mostly along railroad would kind of defeat that or make it more difficult to achieve that sort of presence on the corner. And I think from a traffic standpoint, I think Councilmember Spodowski had mentioned, in my view, it would be more difficult to make sure the pedestrian flow and the vehicular flow on railroad matches what it's supposed to be. And I think a hotel on L... And I think a hotel on L, facing L, for the most part, allows for that entryway down to the garage and perhaps an exit on railroad versus if it was mostly on railroad, I think every single car would have to come from a single location along railroad. So, rotating the hotel is possible, although it would be more difficult for that to work from a feasibility perspective. I'm not saying it's impossible. It is certainly possible. But generally speaking, the hotel where it sits right now would be preferable to rotating it.
Well, I'll ask this question. Would you want us to just pick the location now? Or would you, are you okay with studying it a couple more weeks before we make this decision?
Honestly, I would prefer for you to pick the location today. One of the discussions I had just the other day was with Marriott. And as I mentioned, the process of developing a hotel requires a lot of third-party management, and Marriott is this most significant relationship right now in getting this hotel done. And in order for them to get started fully on their design review and really understanding the site and programming, where the lobby sits, and what the rooms look like, we've really got to get started now. I know two weeks is not going to defeat the process. It's certainly something that, if the council decides tonight, I would certainly be supportive of. And I, just like everyone else in this room and everyone else watching today, wants a successful hotel. And if the process requires another two weeks of analysis, and that's what requires, but my preference today would be the council to pick a location today.
Well, I think I also heard the caveat, not just pick a location, but a particular location.
Correct.
Right.
Well, to be fair, we asked him that, too.
What I'm saying is, do you, if the, I'm trying to get at this. We do have the politics. We do have people that wanted to weigh in on this. And we are going to have to have, live within the community and everything else. So, given that, that's another factor in here.
Absolutely.
So, you're okay with your negotiations with the brand and everything else to wait a couple of weeks?
Yes. That's an honest answer. We could wait a couple of weeks if we had to.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I do want to be clear about our constraints of staff, and we have touched on this briefly before. So, for us to sort of have any meaningful, so if you asked me and, you know, a couple of staff to go in a back room and do some analysis, not talk to anyone, or have any inside input, you know, that's a couple of days and then reproduce and then go through the thing. I don't believe that's what the assignment was. It was actually to go through some design, getting some things on paper, having some discussions, having some evaluation, then ultimately going through your agenda process. The analysis sort of we did here, you gave us instructions on November 29th. We are back here at the very end of January. That's eight weeks. We lost a couple of weeks during the holidays, or we should have, but most of us didn't take any time off. In theory, they should have made it slower. So, about the fastest we could be back to you is about six weeks. So, it's not a week or two we're talking about. Now, part of that is, the last 10 days of that, or six days or seven days of that, is we have designs out, so people can actually react to it. If we give you something the night before you're asked to act on it, I don't think that's particularly helpful to an open and public process. So, I think we really are, at this point, shooting for your workshop date in March at this point. It's possible you could be the first meeting in March, but, you know, you publish, you know, this time, and you saw what happened as we tried to get this packet out. It didn't come out 10 days before. And that was because of what we were asked to do and the timeframe we had. So, I think we do need to be aware of that as we move forward. Again, if Mr. Patel is comfortable with that, that's fine. I'd be uncomfortable promising much analysis, because it seems like we touched on building massing, layout, green space, a little bit on, and I'm still not exactly clear on the assignment of whether we're doing a little analysis on a parking structure next to the bankhead or not. So, again, clarity on the assignment would help staff give you a timeline. Even the most basic of assumptions, I mean, to give you a sense, your February 12th agenda is done. It'll be out in another, you know, 72 hours. So, we're talking about the first meeting in March to get any work at all done as far as a work product, and more likely the middle of March.
Well, I think, so are you okay with that?
Say no.
Wow, that's a, well, you know, I'm an optimist, so I can't honestly say that we can't make it work. I think we can make a lot of things work if we really had to. If that's your specific answer, we can, I'm not going to say, no, we can't make it work. That would be ridiculous. But I got to emphasize that the sooner we can get started, the more this hotel makes sense. So, my preference would be not to wait until then. But if we had to do it, we would certainly make it work.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just highlight one additional item. If we were looking to return in early March, as your first meeting is possible, one other item to consider is the current ENRA expires on February 27th, prior to that date. So, it might be another factor for you to consider tonight.
So, here's where I'm coming from. And I'd like to build it now. But we've heard fairly impassioned pleas to rotate the hotel. We've already heard some issues that are potential there. We have no analysis. We have no diagram. And so, at the moment, what we're saying is, if we put the hotel on the west side, that's what it's going to look like.
I have a different suggestion. I mean, the reason that, from my point of view, the reason that the folks wanted to rotate the hotel 90 degrees was to provide for a clean, green path, if you will, left to right, L to Livermore. I think you could achieve that with putting the hotel on the east side and breaking up that block of residential that is on the west, on the east side drawing now, to your point earlier. And I think we could achieve all that. I mean, I think it would meet the thinking of the group that wants that green space that extends from one street to the other. Putting the hotel on the east side meets the expectation of our hotelier, where he would be the most successful. It would provide a centerpiece for the downtown area, and I think we have to break up the, but I do think we need to break up that big block on the left-hand side there of the housing into smaller units so that we can have a clean, green path down between those buildings.
Well, I agree with that. When I saw the big block of building here, I just did not like that from the get-go. I also had reservations about residential next to the bankhead. So, what this really comes down to is, do you want residential or a hotel next to the bankhead? I think those are our only two viable options at this point, and the rest is dictated from that decision. So, you know, there's no scenario where we can fit the hotel and all the residential on what is now the west-west side, the west end of the west side. Stockman's Park is what it is. As we stated last night, it was a great offer. It's a great opportunity. The Stockman had a very reasonable offer, and that is now that side of the parcel. So, we are, we have only a certain amount of land to work with, and I am not willing to put a thinner, if you would call it, a more linear hotel that could potentially be taller up against another four-story residential building right across from it. I mean, that is, you know, now you're starting to talk about the Star Wars trench run, you know, right down in the middle of downtown. You have the two massive structures right next to each other, and I don't see the value in having open space that is now overshadowed by two four-story tall buildings next to each other. I just don't see how that works. I'd be willing to see it diagrammed out so I can really, you know, take a look at it. But my experience as an urban planner and my planning commission experience in 20 years in municipal government staring at plans tells me that I don't think it's going to work.
Well, Councilmember Carling?
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, the decisions here are residential or hotel. And also, I think another decision is, you know, whether or not we ask staff to go back and diagram this out. I mean--
Well, let's just cut to the chase. Are you willing to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll move. We can put the hotel on the east side.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. And this would be to actually go back and start negotiating with the, with the proposed developer on that. Okay, so, all right. So, we've got a motion and a second discussion to put the hotel on the east side. And then, I think one of your other points was to break up the housing so we don't have that large block.
Sure. But I think, I mean, my thinking about this is, given what City Manager just mentioned about the timeframe for all this, and what Mr. Patel said about his interest in making a successful hotel for us, I think we could, we could expect that, and give the city time to figure out what the residential would look like on the west side by making the decision that the hotel goes on the east side. I mean, is that--
And housing's going to be last in.
Is that a fair analysis, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's another reason that I think that would help staff, because, I mean, not, I mean, they work for us, obviously, and we want them to do, but we can't, we can't expect them to completely burn the midnight oil every night for the next several weeks just on a whim.
So, this sets another piece in place.
Yeah, that's what I think.
But it still leaves in play--
Yes, the housing's still in play. I still think we can achieve the open space that was, I mean, again, the reason that the hotel was to be rotated was to provide that open space down the middle of the property from left to right, and this would achieve that.
And you're proposing to break up, as the plans progress, break up--
Sure.
--a block of housing, similar to what the, that alternate plan that we saw.
Right.
And, but to put the house, the hotel on the east side--
Yes.
--which is where Mr. Patel would prefer.
Right.
And then have staff come back with the new configuration for the housing.
Right.
Okay, so that's your motion. There's a second. Discussion on the motion.
I don't know. Let me start. I wander the neighborhood downtown all the time. I'm always, people see me cruising around the neighborhood just to get some mileage in or whatever it is, or, you know, stop by the alehouse or whatever works that day. I don't think it's any question, and where we think about it, that on one hand, Councilmember Carling has an idea here that if, I think about it, that the hotelier believes that this will be the most successful place for it on the east side. It's more central to the businesses. I've rolled down about three weeks ago down to the corner of L and Railroad, and looking across where that hotel would be, it looks like there's a, you know, there might as well be an ocean from one end to the other. It looks a long way from downtown. And one of my first thoughts was, how long is it going to take? What's it going to take to get things going down here to make sure this is going to be a viable location? If we build the hotel, get things rolling there to build the hotel, what else is going to be going up to me? You know, in such a case like that, I could see a potential for the hotel being the last thing to go in, so that all the other amenities are in already. As much as I like West Side Hotel from the start, I can see a good case for the east side one, as the way Councilmember Carling described it. I still want to stick with the west side to see just what, you know, I applaud Mr. Patel for hanging in there with us, because this is a tough one. It's, looking at it across that big parking lot right now, of course, all you see is a big parking lot. But if the hotel's going to be one of the first things going in down there, then they're going to see a big parking lot. And for how long? And what's it going to do to potential visitorship when we're trying to get the hotel in so the wineries can benefit from it, so the business people can benefit from it? And that's a real important piece. And I think either situation is going to improve the downtown. I love the wider greenway from L Street to Livermore. That is an element that I really want to see placed in here. I've been against the east-side hotel, as many of you know, while this whole process has gone forward. But I think of it a little as a businessman, a little as a former banker who did commercial loans, of what's going to make that hotel work? And I have to think like that to make sure that what we have going in here isn't going to be an empty building with no tenants in it, because the hotelier bailed, because we couldn't get enough people to visit a location that looked across a big dirt lot. Is that enough variables in one sentence?
I'm in suspense. I don't know where you're actually sitting on this. I can't get any clues.
We're going to cite dedication for the Stockman Park right there. So, that's going to be one of the first things moving.
Oh, that's understood, understood. Just talking from looking into that corner of L and Railroad. And I expect, I would love to see everybody go out there and just take a look across there. Stockman's Park, it still looks like it might be a way off. There's no, no markers right now where you could see, you can picture where it might be. But I would love to see that West Side Hotel be okay from the start, be busy from the start, and not have to worry about the housing element at some point over there having to be built while we're trying to keep visitors entertained downtown. Either way, there could be a lot of buildings. There's going to be a lot of construction. There's going to be a lot of chaos down there for a little while, but we've lived through that before with First Street. I just, I want to make sure it's the best place to be successful. So, I'm ambivalent is the word I guess I have right now. I'd love to be able after last night and getting up early this morning to sleep on a little bit and talk with people a little bit. But, yeah, I just, there's, I'm just throwing out ideas, because I just, I see the value of either location, just that I think the railroad now is just a little tougher to integrate, I think, unless everything else is going in there.
And I appreciate that comment, because I've been, you know, pulling a John Kerry on this one throughout the entire process, flip-flopping back and forth between, oh, the east side, it definitely has to be on the east side. And then the west-side concepts came up, and then Stockman came up, and it was like, okay, that makes the possibility of a west-side now viable, in my opinion. And it really is, this is, this is the public process. It's not one meeting. It's not even, you know, a series of back-to-back meetings. It's what we've gone through. It's just several months of struggling with this and really vetting many, many options and trying to take all of the input into consideration and come up with the best plan possible. We're hearing the reaction to residential next to the bankhead is very strong. I don't think I've heard a single person, correct me if I'm wrong, say, yes, that's the perfect site for residential. Not one. I heard a lot of anti-residential. So, we need to fit residential on these two sites somehow. So, if it's not next to the bankhead, then where? It's just, I'm always amazed at the process of how public testimony and people, you know, one person bringing up one particular point starts to change the entire conversation. So, I completely understand where Councilmember Coon was coming from, where your initial reaction is very strong, but when you get into the analysis, it's not as clear. It's as clear as mud. So, sometimes you just need to hack these things through and have discussions like this and make a decision, so.
If I could just make, I have a letter that the council received a while back, and I think it's very germane to this point. And it says, this was from a downtown steering committee member. And it says, "Over three months, the committee helped to draft a public outreach program. Guided by Placeworks and David Early, the committee supported a plan that would allow citizens to express their views. This outreach plan, as council requested, gathered expert testimony to create a set of mutually agreed upon facts or findings." Mutually agreed facts or findings. "One finding in particular was stressed over and over again. Hotel consultants were adamant that regardless of where the hotel was located, this iconic building must be a prominent presence on South Livermore." This iconic building must be a prominent presence on South Livermore. That was one of the agreed-upon findings, without question. It must be visible as visitors arrive-- It must be visible as visitors arrived to the downtown, and this is what Mr. Patel has acknowledged. And the letter continues, "Please remember the wishes of the public voiced during this extensive outreach effort. I hope you will work with your staff to honor these requests from the citizens of your city." That was signed by Lynn Sepala. And now, this hotel, that was proposed of by the community group, has completely left South Livermore Avenue, is now on railroad. Where was the public process where that happened? That change happened between January 18th and January 25th. It lost all connection to South Livermore. And yet, the agreed-upon finding, stressed over and over again, hotel consultants were adamant that regardless of where the hotel was located, this iconic building must be a prominent presence on South Livermore Avenue. And that's what we have here. It's an agreed-upon finding, and this, this is what we've got. And this is, this is the decision that we're faced with. And it said, "Please remember the wishes of the public voiced during this extensive outreach effort." That's what this is. And, and that's where it needs to be. And so, that's, that's where I'm at.
Is it my turn again?
Oh, for lack of words, my soapbox.
So, I agree with everything I've heard here. What I did want to do is put it out there that we've heard what people were saying, wanted to say what it was going to take, to, to figure it out if it was reasonable. We've seen some initial indications that it's one thing to kind of say, hey, wouldn't this be cool? But in stark reality, it may not work. And I think that one of the things I hark back to when we first started the discussions with the hotelier, was the value of the east side is as well-constrained. There's no lot of ifiness of what's going to happen. And that's, sort of, seconds what Councilmember Coomer was saying. You put the hotel out there and railroad and L, you don't know what's exactly when that's going to happen on the Growth Brothers, but it will. You really don't know for years what the housing element is going to look like, so that here's this iconic boutique hotel sitting in the middle of a dirt lot for years. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, I, and I think that's, so that's what, what resonates with me. The other thing that I think very important to note, I wrote down all the comments as they were coming in last night, but the people who predominantly had experience in the industry and had experience traveling, every one of them said, put the hotel on the east side. Every one of them. There was no compelling business reason enumerated by anybody to put it on the west side. None. It was pure politics. And the other thing is, I completely agree that, and it was my understanding, that that building design we're looking at was simply illustrative of what you could do. It wasn't, if you put the hotel on the east side, you had to do that. It was simply another configuration of a surface garage, and I don't know what it is, you say fifteen thousand or so per space if you put it surface versus underground, and then it's a hundred, you know, whatever it is, that's, what is it, three million or something? So, it's a, it's a, it's a three-million impact to split the buildings up, reconfigure them so you can get the green thing. It's something, it's a big number, but it's something that we can afford. And I think the other thing to take into account that when the, that parking and the, and the fact that it's pure workforce means that the affordable housing funds can participate in building that parking. So, it's a different impact on the general fund. So, it makes a whole lot of sense to split that block up. Don't get into what everybody's always saying, well, that looks like Lennar or some other places. We can make it have the character of Livermore with the night, with the right-sized buildings. It'll feel open, and it will be, as some people have mentioned, the right transition from the housing on the Growth Brothers, and we go right into the housing there. That housing will absolutely energize and activate that park far more than a hotel would. Because a hotel, just think about it, hundred and twenty rooms, maybe eighty percent or whatever occupancy, I'm sure Mr. Patel would like it a hundred percent, but, you know, there's reality. So, you, but by the time you get to it, that hotel is contributing maybe ten people walking around, on average. Like, what is that? That's not activating anything. But, a hundred and thirty families living there, a lot more. Right? So, let's, I mean, all of the numbers have been bandied around here, it's just, you know, I don't know where they've been coming from, but they haven't made any sense. But I, I'm trying to put it just in perspective. A housing over there makes a whole lot more sense, the hotel on the east side makes a whole lot more sense, and it's actually good for the bankhead, because there's the potential synergy with the bankhead in terms of using it as a conference facility. So, it allows the people in the hotel to actually schedule some conferences and make use of the facility a lot more. So, I think, I wanted to tee it up for further study, and I, I'll just say this one last thing, because when I was getting my MBA, I've said this to some of my fellow council members, the quickest way to fail, when you do a Harvard Business Case Study, is to say, I need more information. That's how you fail. Okay? So, I was teeing it up, but I purposely know, and I agree with Councilmember Carling, we got enough information to make this decision, but really wanted to make sure that we were doing our best to reach out and see what it would take. So, that's where I'm at on, on this. I think I didn't enumerate all of the, the other things, but the hotel being there, it, it will, you know, one of the other issues with respect to the hotel, and we haven't gotten into it in the public discussion much, but one of the issues with the hotel is around the food service. And we could ask Mr. Patel to talk about that, but let me just try and summarize it, and if I screw it up, correct me. But the thing is, I mean, and I think, and this is a quote I got from Mr. Madden, is, he was advised when he was building his hotel, you can make kind of a little money in a hotel, because you can lose it all back by putting a restaurant in there. So, it doesn't make any sense. So, that the kind of food service that you would have would be, you know, you can take advantage of what's around the, that location at the moment a lot better than sitting up there on, on the northwest corner. So, it makes a lot more sense, because we cannot really afford in this hotel to put another restaurant in there and lose all the money back. And that's just, that just ends up, nobody wins on that one. So, there's a lot more details here that enter into it that I'm, I'm aware of, and I don't know that everybody is, but it just makes a whole lot of sense to put it on the east side.
One additional question that I had for staff, putting the residential over on the west side and breaking it up. I am a huge proponent of that. It, it creates that central east-west green space that people are looking for. Just, again, without any further six weeks' analysis required, are we looking at any four-story buildings with that residential configuration? Can we break it up into four, three-story buildings? Is it, you know, two, two-story buildings and a three-story building? What exactly are we looking at?
So, you have a couple of different configuration options there. My, my best estimate with a very limited data is if you broke, you could break it up into three or four buildings. You know, four buildings essentially would be to mirror the two yellow buildings out on the corner and have the central open space move through the middle between the space, between the buildings that would be on L Street. If you did something like that, you'd have a combination of four-story and three-story buildings would be our best estimate in those three or four buildings. I don't believe you could get it all done with three-story buildings. And it, and between all of those, it's a trade-off between footprint and height. You make them a little bigger, then obviously you could do a three-story building. So, it, it, it would come down to us drawing up some, some options for you to take a look at, and you could ultimately make those decisions at a later time.
Right.
But you could have a combination of three and four-story buildings, or if you wanted a little larger footprint, three-story buildings, I think would be possible.
Because it's, it's, again, to me, this decision comes down to kind of a, you know, just a, a basic matter of what you can fit on that site.
Across the street, you have four-story buildings, essentially on the Growth site. One of the directions you gave us was that four stories was previously acceptable at L Street, tapering down to three, and then essentially closer to South Livermore, shorter buildings.
And I'm, I'm still very concerned about that, and I need to see what that looks like, but that's not where we're at tonight.
Correct.
Excuse me, since I was, you quoted me, I'd like to have these two sentences.
Okay, I, I will, I will not reopen the public hearing, but you said...
You quoted me.
You're right, I did.
I think you, you missed something incredibly important.
I will not reopen the public hearing. We had public comment from everyone last night, you included, and if I reopen the public hearing, in order to be fair, I would have to allow everyone to speak again, and...
You quoted me, and you misquoted me.
I read...
You correctly, but you...
I read from your letter, and I read selections from your letter. Mr. Sepala, thank you very much. Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
So, if we can be clear as to what the motion is exactly, again, it is, if I can have it just restated, it's, it's hotel and...
Okay, it's hotel and, there's the staff to come back with the, some reconfiguring of the, the housing, but to enter into negotiations to select the east-side hotel site for, for the consideration of that, citing the, the hotel at that location. I know you've got to go through negotiations and...
Number of implementing step, but the gist of the motion was to locate the hotel on the east side, and then locate the residential on the west side, but reconfigure it and return with reconfiguration for council consideration on the housing.
Yeah. That'll work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Certainly.
One question. We didn't really talk about the street on the east side. Are we, what are we, what is this motion saying about that?
Which street?
Oh. That.
Oh, the access?
Are you talking about the, the access between the bankhead and the hotel there and the parking?
So, are, are we saying that that's generally our aspiration? And that we will, once we get serious about the hotel over there, we'll figure it out? But that the essential elements are surface ADA parking and service access? Is that what we're, I mean, somehow...
That was my intent, yes.
Right, okay. Just, just, right, but, so we're not saying exactly like that, but the reasons that that street is designed like that will still be satisfied. That's right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, everybody clear on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, okay, so the, it passes four to one with Councilmember Coomer in, in opposition. Okay? Very good, thank you very much. Next steps?
So, just to reiterate, we will, we will be continuing negotiations with Presidio Companies and look to bring back a draft term sheet to you as soon as we can. And we will also, in conjunction with the other actions you've taken, be preparing a broader downtown specific plan amendment, which would include these elements. In addition, not summarized here, but as discussed, we will bring back some alternatives for you to look at on the housing.
Okay. But it looks like we still, looks like we need more information on the housing, so we'll be coming back to that. So, with that, since that's the last of the elements that we're going to be looking at, I guess I would, if there being no further business coming before the council, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Okay. Vice Mayor moves to adjourn, is there a second?
Yeah, I move adjournment.
Okay. And it was a second by Cooper? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, who's going to say no to adjournment?
Wouldn't you? You should.
All right. Meeting adjourned.